All right, we will call a meeting to order and we'll be starting with the public hearing tonight. So we'll call on Mr. Grossi to give us the information.
Thank you. Yes, the request tonight is around repairs that need to be done to our underground storage tanks. The district has four underground storage tanks for number two fuel oil. They're located at Peterborough Elementary School, South Meadow, the high school, and Great Brook. The Great Brook and Antrim Elementary Campus, they share a tank. We do quarterly, we do monthly, quarterly, and annual inspections of these tanks. In this last annual inspection, there were several failures that were noted. They range from, you know, the automatic tank gauge console, which is very expensive, fill adapters, spill bucket tightness, some electrical fittings that had pulled away from a transition sump, and the replacement of a, the most expensive part was a replacement of a cathodic protection anodes at South Meadow School. Those are required because their tanks are all double-wall steel. Anyway, the request is for $37,369.99. It was sole source to our underground storage tank compliance contractor that we've had for the last 11 years. And yeah, the request is for those funds and hopefully endorse it.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Grossi? All right. Again, the public hearing has to stay open for half an hour, so we will go on with the regular board meeting and come back to that. All right, if anyone could stand and join me in the pledge?
So, Points of Pride for today, we're focusing on Hope Squad. So, we are excited that we are starting our second year with Hope Squad. Last year was our first year. We were the first district in New Hampshire to roll out Hope Squad. Hope Squad is a school-based, peer-to-peer suicide prevention program that empowers trained and mentored students who are nominated by their peers to perform acts of intentional outreach. We have six staff members. So, we have two GBS staff members, Riley Beliveau and Gina Squattrido, two South Meadow staff members, Annie Keating, Lydia Price, and two high school staff members, Alyssa Hamilton and Leslie Holcomb. And they went through a certification process to become a Hope Squad advisor, and they work with the students on how to best look out for their peers. So, these advisors, and this is from Heather McKillop's recent newsletter, train trusted student leaders to recognize peers in distress, encourage them to seek help, and reduce the stigma surrounding mental health. The program aims to foster human connections, helps connect struggling students with counselors and other trusted adults. So, this is a evidence-based program, and it's recognized by the Suicide Prevention Resource Center's Best Practices Registry. And it's a programming that we have put into place in collaboration with Monadnock Community Hospital and Marahell, New Hampshire. And it is up and running this year. The high school had a in-school field, not field day, in-school field trip to get started. I know that South Meadow's nominating fifth-grade Hope Squad members, and GBS is hard at work to expand theirs. So, it's up and rolling. And if you visit the schools, you often see people wearing their Hope Squad t-shirts. And we've gotten really positive feedback from the adults that have gone through the training and the students. And I believe at least one of our school board reps is a Hope Squad member. And that's the Points of Pride for tonight.
Approval of the manifest?
I certify that the manifest listed below totaling $1,469,353.32 have been reviewed by me and are found to be proper charges against Contuckig Valley School District for goods and/or services received and have been properly processed prior to the submittal to the school board.
I move to approve the manifest? Move second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have anyone here tonight for a public comment? No public comment? Whoops. Yes. Okay. If you would please come up to the microphone and push the button so it goes on and would like...
Won't even be that long. Wait a minute, is this working? Did I do it?
If you could tell us...
Little green light is on. There we go. Now I'm in there. Kate Kuhn, I live in Peterborough. And I'm here kind of as a member of the League of Women Voters. I understood that there is public comment that's possible at beginning and after or end of a meeting. And it's quite appropriate today is National Voter Registration Day. I didn't know that until mid-morning, but I knew I wanted to come here because ConVal has now, two years running, done a successful high school voter registration drive. And I know that the two young men who are on your school board are partly responsible for that. But I want to urge ConVal to step it up even more, lean in more, not just a few people, but really as a school, to have two voter registration drives this year. Because I think you need to have one where you're registering voters who will be 18 by the time of a next election. They don't have to have turned 18, but when they will be. So, that ConVal students will be ready to vote on the local election level, the school board budget, you know, the ConVal budget. All of those elections and town elections, which are really important, are in March. So, that means you need to think, in my opinion, I don't want you to give up the later one because that's good. That idea is, what's it called, caps and ballots. Like, you get your graduation, you know, you graduate from high school and at the same time you have registered to vote. So, that's one of the things that you've done by the time you complete high school with the help of an independent voter registration drive. So, I'm wanting to kind of work with you guys and keep coming to school committee meetings and seeing who needs to be gotten to, to see you organize two voter registration drives this year. And League of Women Voters has helped you in the past by identifying the supervisors of the checklist and contacting them. It's easier to get them than the town clerks to come. And we would continue to offer that support. But it doesn't succeed if it's not student-led and adult-supported. So, that's my opening pitch for the voting season. That's it. Two minutes? Was I under?
Thank you very much. Reports. We'll start off with the Withdrawal Committee report.
Thanks, Mike. The Withdrawal Study Committee met on Thursday, September 11th. The meeting began with a presentation from the Francis Town School Committee. They shared their motivations for continuing to pursue withdrawal. They shared a staffing model, a cursory financial summary, as well as their study of three independent districts in New Hampshire. They shared their intentions to operate a part-time pre-K with K through five attending Francis Town. They shared that ConVal was their first choice as a receiving district to tuition in their middle and high school students. They did acknowledge that due diligence has required them to have conversations with other potential receiving districts. They maintained that should their withdrawal succeed, they would immediately proceed with withdrawing from the SAU and establishing their own independent SAU. Following the presentation, the presenters fielded questions from the committee. The committee next took up the matter of Temple's withdrawal, and after having received Temple's rescission of their petition to withdraw, opted to put the matter to a vote. After a lengthy discussion on the procedural aspects of our vote, the committee voted unanimously to not recommend Temple's withdrawal from ConVal. The committee will produce and approve a final report at its next meeting and submit it back to the board, and the committee, as it pertains to Temple, will be dissolved.
Last night, the Education Committee met for the first time, and Bill Gurney is now the chairman of the Education Committee. So, I don't know if either Bill or Ms. Stevenson would like to make some comments about the meeting?
Okay. So, we had a very productive meeting last night. Thank you to everybody that attended. We spent, and thank you to one of our students who also attended and asked some great questions. We spent most of the time talking about the Literacy Committee and the work that the Literacy Committee is going to be doing. And we will be meeting and giving updates regularly. We will be looking at conducting a pilot this year with some evidence-based programming that's backed in the science of reading. And we will be making a recommendation to the full board for programming, hopefully by maybe like May of 2026. We talked about that whole process. We answered some really great questions. And then we talked about the Professional Development Day that's coming up in October. And I reviewed the plans for that day and answered any questions that people had. And it was a very productive meeting, and I look forward to the next one.
Do you have anything you would like to add?
Sure. One concern that was raised at the committee meeting was that the amount of time we have for professional development and our professional development days is not up to the task of covering all of the mandated educational experiences that our teachers are expected to have. And that we need to look at how we can balance the important work around curriculum that teachers do on these professional development days and with the mandated tasks that they're required to do at the same time.
Okay. Thank you. Budget and property, Jim?
We talked about a lot of things tonight. We really didn't come to any voter conclusions tonight, I think, but we moved along our discussion of the trust, the use, the capital improvement plan, the use of trust funds, the investment of the trust funds. We also took a, took a look at our first set of goals for the Budget and Property Committee, which we'll show you later. But one thing of, we did start the meeting off with a presentation by Neil on the fiscal year '25 DOE report, which is basically is a financial report on the last fiscal year, and how that will, once that's done, it'll, it'll really is one of the first steps in the process in the 2025 tax bills. And in the course of looking at that, we did find some good information. You want to share the information we found about the adequacy grant?
Sure. It was about 130,000 more than was estimated. So, that was good news.
So, that'll, that'll, that'll serve to reduce the tax bills. All the towns except Hancock, Sharon, and Antrim will see their test, assessments go down by the town. The other towns are going up for different reasons. Ours is going up because of, we add a couple of students, and three students adds like 10% to our, our share of the ADM. So, we'll be putting out a financial article regarding tax bills here shortly.
Anyone have any questions for Jim? Liam and/or Marcus?
So, we have quite a few things to talk about, a report about from ConVal tonight. So, we'll be splitting these apart. So, I first have four things. First of all, we are starting New Hampshire tackles hunger, which I can see now, some of you have already brought in some non-perishable food items. That was going to be one of the things I would ask of members of the board or anyone from the public. If you wanted to bring in some food items, that would be wonderful. I have a box that I'll put out there, and I will be collecting food come around October 3rd. It'll all go towards the Peterborough Food Pantry to help end hunger for, I believe, 24 hours. I think they beat that time last year. So, I think they're aiming to do that again. Second thing I have on October 9th, the National Honor Society is running a community day of service. We did it last year in the spring. It was such a big hit that we were told that they wanted another one in the school year in the fall as well. However, I have been asked by the advisor that some additional funds would not be, you know, uncalled for or unwanted for NHS to help smooth this along. A few more things. On October 31st, the National Honor Society is also running a blood drive. So, I'll be dressing up as a vampire for that. I want to help out. And lastly, on November 22nd, which is a bit far off, but they told me they wanted me to talk about this, on the Class of 2026, we'll be running the craft fair. We will have over 90 vendors, I believe, don't quote me on that, selling various items in the ConVal building. So, make sure to come on out, see what they have, or just take a look, and then I guess.
Okay. So, I'm going to start off with sports. Well, one sport. Our football team recently had their first overtime victory in history, which was amazing. Now, to go on to our, to our school counseling. Today, during task, we had 15 colleges come to our lunchroom and present about their college. Also, in weeks to come, we will have 40 college visits over the next few weeks that students can go to and learn about the colleges and ask questions.
Okay. For either Liam or Marcus. Yes, Kyle?
I remember seeing a report on the Honor Society work last year. It was very well-received from what we could see. You seem to be requesting, not terribly clearly, how much money you actually have in mind. I was wondering if you could tie down specifically what they would like money for and how much money they would like.
So, as for the specific number, $1,000 is what was requested. As for what it is specifically for, various things. One of the things mentioned was helping build new lunch tables so that come spring and summertime, we can have more places to eat outside. That is the only thing off the top of my head that I could remember mentioned specifically. So, but there is probably a lot more besides that.
Okay. I'm sure that if you talk to Principal McKillop, and she gets something to us, we'll be able to look at that. And... All right, consent agenda? Any questions on the consent agenda?
Brenda, I have one change to the minutes. It would be in my Communications Committee report. So, 5C, third line, a research project tracking educational recovery across the nation was shared. If we could add post-pandemic between, right after a research project, project tracking post-pandemic educational recovery, just to further clarify that the leading gains we are seeing across the state of New Hampshire are within the period of post-pandemic recovery. Thanks.
Any other questions about the consent agenda items, item? Okay. Could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So, moved?
Sec. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, Superintendent's report?
Okay, monthly calendar. This, we have meetings tonight on Thursday, the 18th. We have Communications Committee meeting at 6:00, followed by the Building Committee at 7:00. And that's it for this week, I believe. For next week, we have Policy Committee meeting on the 22nd at 6:00 PM, and Selectmen's Advisory Committee meeting at 6:00 on the Thursday, the 25th, followed by Withdrawal Study Committee at 7:00. Anything else for next week? Okay. We go into October, during the first week of October, on Thursday, the 2nd, we have a Withdrawal Study Committee meeting at 6:00 PM. Anything? Anything else for that week? Okay. During second, well, the second week of October, on the 7th, we have Budget and Property at 5:30, followed by a School Board meeting. And on Thursday that week, we have Communications Committee at 6:00 and Building Committee at 7:00. Anything else for that week? Okay, so a public hearing on the 7th, right? On the, yeah. Perfect. The following week, on the Thursday, the 16th, we have Selectmen's Advisory Committee at 6:00 and Withdrawal Study Committee at 7:00. Anything else for that week? So, just because Brenda didn't have a microphone, I'm going to repeat what she said. She confirmed with Selectmen's Advisory that making the, usually they meet on the 4th. She's confirmed that meeting on the 3rd Thursday of the month will work for them.
Yeah. Thank you for confirming with SAC. Can I announce the 15th?
Yes.
So, October 15th is a Wednesday. We will be, the board will be hosting the Third Annual, I believe, Meet and Greet between the Board and the CVEA. It's a social gathering from 4:00 to 6:00. No board business will be done. It is also privately paid for. And I encourage you guys all to come out and get to know the wonderful teachers we have here in the district and eat some meatballs. 4:00 to 6:00 at the Monadnock Country Club, right here in Peterborough.
Okay. On Monday, October 20th, the Education Committee meeting, meet, the Education Committee will be meeting at 5:30 PM. And on Tuesday, the 24th, we have Budget and Property meeting at 5:30, followed by a School Board meeting at 7:00. Anything else for that week? A public hearing before the School Board meeting on the 21st. And during the final week of October, we've got Policy Committee meeting at 6:00 PM on Monday, the 27th. Anything else for October? So, I believe I'm all caught up on school board requests that have been submitted through School Board Request email. Must I missed any? Right. So, now we have three presentations tonight.
Before, let's go back to the public hearing before we start the presentation. So, excuse me. All right, coming back to the public hearing. So, if there are no other questions for Mr. Grossi, then I would like a motion to accept his request for the underground storage tank repairs for the amount of $37,369.99.
So, moved.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grossi.
Okay. Our first presentation will be done by Jen Kylie, the Director of our CTE program.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I know I've met many of you before, but that's not the case for all of you. So, it's lovely to meet you. I have my computer here just because I am, distance vision is not so great for me. So, I have it here as well so that I can see what it is that I am presenting on. I understand that not all members of the school board may be acquainted with what career and technical education is. So, I wanted to give a brief overview of what it is that we do at the Region 14 Applied Technology Center, where we are as far as legislative pieces, and then what our specific teachers are doing. One piece that I wanted to be clear with from the start, and I framed it here with the starting slide, are the benefits that it has to our students in our district and our community. And to be clear, that the Region 14 Applied Technology Center actually serves three different districts. We serve the District of ConVal. Then, we also serve the districts of Jaffrey Ringe and Messineck, because we are a regional CTE center, which is the formula in the state. All right. So, just a little about me. For those who don't know who I am, this is my eighth year going into the district, serving as the CTE Director. Prior to this, I was an education consultant at the New Hampshire Department of Education with the Career Development Bureau for four years, and that's where I got my introduction to CTE. And then, prior to that, I was an English teacher at various different environments, including the state prison system, most recently, prior to... including the state prison system most recently, prior to joining the D O E. So I wanted to give a little bit of context, as I said, to what C T is. And I appreciate that this is a dense slide, which you can read at your leisure. But C T is preparing students for careers that they are going to have after high school. Some of our students are going to have these careers after attending some sort of post-secondary institution, whether that is a technical school, a two-year school, a four-year college. Some of them are going to go directly into trades or apprenticeships or going into the military, and some of them will go directly into the workforce. The purpose of C T E is to help students to go as seamlessly as possible from their high school education into wherever it is that they're going to be going after high school. And our purpose is to help them prepare to do that with post-secondary credits, with industry-recognized credentials, and with appropriate work-based learning opportunities. The graphic, which I'm hoping that you folks have a copy of this in your slides. If not, I'm sure Dr. Forrest will share these with you, gives some information about how C T is present in the state of New Hampshire, most specifically. And you can see that thirty-one percent of all of New Hampshire's jobs will require education beyond high school. You can also see the number of secondary C T participants in the state, as well as post-secondary C T participants, the number of credentials that are awarded in C T fields. And then also that large number at the bottom is the allocation that New Hampshire receives from the federal government as part of the Perkins Five Grant. Seven thousand and twenty thousand dollars, seven million, twenty thousand dollars and six hundred and one. Just as a note, that it is allocated based on the size of the state and the number of students who exist in poverty in the state. This is actually the lowest amount that any state can be allocated. It's similar for other states who have low populations, but we do quite a lot with it. The next slide is a video that is put on by the New Hampshire Department of Education. I had asked Dr. Forrest, we've already queued it up to avoid folks having to deal with the credits and what have you.
One big advantage with C T programs is not only learning things that you do like, but also learning things that you don't like and learning that at an early stage.
The ability for a student coming out of through Tech Ed Center to find a passion and what they want to do is really tremendous. There's no other opportunity like it.
My grades were awful. I wouldn't even show up my sophomore year. And then I started the program my junior year, and I was at school every day. And I really wanted to come here. And it helped me succeed, not just in my C T program, but in every other class as well.
When we talk with employers and industry folks who are looking to have students move into their industry, we say to them, what are the skills that you're looking for students to have? They always say that what they're looking for is communication, collaboration, the ability to work on a team, and the ability to have ideas and bring those ideas to fruition.
It's not just, you know, preparation for, you know, a job that you could get in the future. It's, it could be applied to almost any field. If I didn't want to go into engineering, if I wanted to go into physics, or if I wanted to go into even writing, I could use the skills that I've learned in the C T programs and those fields.
It's mind blowing. The opportunity that C T has offered both of my children is mind blowing.
I feel ready for life, and I have my whole career set up. I can really see my future because of this program.
I am C T.
I am C T.
I am C T.
We are absolutely a C T family. I'm a believer.
I am C T, and you can be too. Come check us out.
So as I mentioned, this is a piece that was put out by the New Hampshire Department of Education. In collaboration with the NICA, which is our state organization for C T administrators. Going to the next slide, again, it continues with just some overview that there are currently twenty-eight C T centers or subcenters in New Hampshire. Again, the numbers that I had relayed on the slide previous, that there's over nine thousand children that participate in high school C T programs, and that it is children who are eligible to participate in grades ten through twelve. So then a little bit more information, just talking, and again, please read this at your leisure if you have the opportunity. Gives you an idea of how we're supported as far as career and technical education at the federal level, as well as the state level. Probably what people know the best regarding funding is Perkins Five. And you can see again where that number breaks down to as far as what we receive at the state level. You can also see what our allocation is. It's that lower bottom number, one hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and twelve cents during this fiscal year. So that's what we receive from the state. In addition, there are administrative rules and legislation that goes through specifics regarding C T. God bless you. To include financial support, defining centers and sending and receiving districts, and then how tuition and transportation is funded. And then a piece that I know the School Board has looked at within the last several years are the administrative rules in regards to tuition and transportation and renovation funding and how that is calculated. So in order to receive state and federal funding, these are the requirements that all of our C T programs have to meet. We have to have a minimum of two Program Advisory Committee meetings per year where our C T instructors are working with folks who are still in industry, as well as post-secondary partners. And that's to make sure that our students are getting an education that is current and that meets industry standards. We don't want to be educating students in the careers that used to be. We want to be educating them in what's coming up and what's happening now. We also want to make sure that we're providing our students with equipment and experiences that are going to make them industry-ready and that are respondent to what employers in our area need. So for example, one of the things I can share is that our manufacturing and construction trades programs, a lot of our industry members were telling us that kids really lacked measurement skills. So we have invested in a metrology, industry-recognized credential kit that teaches children how to read a tape, teaches children how to read calipers and how to utilize them correctly, and how there's fluctuations in measurement based on different temperatures and based on other pieces, and how to read it down to hundreds of inches so that they are better able to go out and get a job at New Hampshire Ball Behrings or get a job at Hitchner and be better qualified as opposed to other folks. We also have to have the industry-recognized credentials in every single one of our programs, as well as work-based learning. And we are regularly monitored by the State Bureau of Office of Career Development in order to make sure that we are meeting all of those requirements. These are some of the opportunities and the benefits that our children have that participate in C T. One of the things that they mentioned during that short video, and then I like to share with all the kids that come in, especially our eighth graders to tour the A T C, is that it is just as important to find out what you don't want to do as what you do want to do. You might think that you want to be a nurse, or you want, might want to be a doctor, and then you go on a job shadow or a ride-along and find out that you can't stand the sight of blood. Well, that's a big problem. And it's something that, important that you can check off your list before you're taking your time in college, continuing down a career pathway that you might not like. We have many examples along that way. They're also earning those certifications, college credits, and they're learning how to interact with professionals in industry and how to have those conversations that children aren't necessarily always having as part of their regular academic career. They're making the connections, as I noted, with local industry. Funding can be used down to grade five, per the rules of Perkins Five. And in the past, we have collaborated with both of the middle schools. It meets college and career readiness standards. And there is the possibility, and actually some requirement now from the state, to provide embedded credits for students who are able to demonstrate competencies once those are crosswalked. Benefits for our community are direct connections with future workforce, having a workforce that is more skilled and is more respondent to what we're hearing from our employers, our skills that are lacking. And there are also tax breaks for monetary and in-kind donations that are available through the state and for the federal government. And that's something that some of our local industry has already made use of. If I'm going to provide the benefits, I would also provide the drawbacks. And I would have to say, really, there aren't any drawbacks. This is programming that, for some children, I have anecdotally heard from, for example, one of our arts teachers, she knows this saves some kids. This is the reason why some kids come to school every day. This can be a turning point for some of our children when they find out through learning by doing what it is that they are meant to do. There are, however, some perceived challenges, including collaborating with the districts that we work with in order to make sure our calendar and bell schedules are as closely aligned as possible so that our children get the most instructional time they can. There is cost that has to be calculated, and there's a bunch of different metrics that go into that. And then academic equity, there are some challenges where some children don't participate in C T classes because they perceive that their GPA might be negatively affected or because of the antiquated stigmas. Some people still regard C T as voc ed, and we are not voc ed. This is a much more lengthy slide. It's super dense. But at your leisure, I would recommend that you take a look at Senate Bill ninety-nine, which passed recently and gets into some more of the challenges that we're facing now in C T as far as dealing with sending and receiving students and how payments will be made out. That's something I would encourage School Board members to take a look at. And it's something that, at some point, the superintendents of our three districts are going to have to get together because we have to redo our regional agreement in order to meet these requirements. At a much more local level, you can see that we currently offer nine C T programs at our center. Two of them are at the other high schools that are in our region. We still offer auto technic, technician at Messineck, and then construction trades at Conet. However, they don't currently have an instructor. And then we offer programming here at our site as well at Conville. Although I will say, in full disclosure, pre-engineering, we don't currently have an instructor for that as well as it's very hard to lure somebody out of industry with the pay rates that they can achieve as engineers versus in education. Conville students also have the opportunity to take classes and are currently taking them in cosmetology, culinary arts, E M T, and health science at other local C T centers. And what I often tell students when I do career counseling with them is that there is a C T program for everyone and that all of our students have the right to attend any C T program in the state. And that it's my responsibility, and I work in conjunction with school counseling in order to help them find a program that works for them. In addition, we offer students the opportunity to earn thirty-six transcripted post-secondary credits, as well as an articulation agreement with Keene State College to earn up to eight credits for completing any of our C T programs. I would note that that's more transcripted credits that we offer through C T programming than the academic side of the house does. In addition, students can earn a variety of industry-recognized credentials. And you can see some of those represented up on the screen. All of those which students can put on their resumes as soon as they earn them and use those as they apply for college, use them as they apply for different positions when they go out and about. So my next slide, I will say, is very lengthy and in the idea of time and to be considerate to the other presenters this evening. Perhaps Dr. Forrest can share it out at a later date, it's like an eleven-minute-long video that our Digital Photo and Video Program put together. But it talks about the impact of C T specifically in our region. And you get to hear from Conville students about how C T has infected them, as well as some of our teachers. And with that, I'd like to say, I hope it doesn't go forward from there. I just pressed, I apologize, Dr. Forrest, if you could press pause on that with a clicker. I don't know how to get to the next slide. I apologize. With that, I'd like to say thank you very much for your time. I wasn't sure how this was couched, if there was any specific direction that you folks wanted to hear about C T from, but I'm very happy to answer any of your questions and certainly would be open if you'd wish to have further discussion.
Questions? Jim?
Are there any other, are there any other popular C T programs in the state that we're not offering? Like I've heard about maybe the drone program is fairly...
Certainly, there, so there are many C T programs in the state. There are over a hundred actually, different C T programs that are offered. Those are decided upon based on economic and labor market information data for the area because we want to make sure that students will have employability both at the local level and then as they move outward into the state and the national level. It's also based upon things like a school district and a region's ability to recruit and retain teachers for those programs, and then their ability to financially support them. As you saw, we get just about, I'd say, a hundred and fourteen thousand in funding from the feds, and that is spread over the nine programs that we have currently. And then it's up to the local budgets to support many of the rest of the expenses related to C T. There are some state funds that are available in regards to renovation, but that has to be supported at the local level as well. So in our most recent renovation application that the School Board had supported, and then we ended up not putting forward to the bond, we had put forward health science technology because that is always strongly in demand, and we're currently sending students out of region for that, as well as animal science because there is economic and labor market information to demonstrate that we're going to soon have a dearth of veterinarians and other related career fields in this area. So that's something that we had looked to include as well. But there are many career pathways that children can pursue.
Thanks.
Certainly.
When we're sending, when you mentioned we're sending students out of Center for Health and Wellness, where are they going?
Health science.
Yeah, health science.
Certainly. So we're sending one student to Milford for health science technology, and then we're sending another student to Keene for E M T.
Are there other programs that we're sending out for?
Yes, we currently send two students to Keene for cosmetology. I'm sending three students to Milford for culinary. And then within our region, we are sending, I believe, eighteen students to Messineck for automotive. We do still pay tuition for those, however, whenever they're happening at a location that is not at Conville.
One more. How about, does our center and school specifically receive from out of center?
We receive from out of our high school, from Messineck and from Conet, but not from out of region, sir, no. Because many of the programs that we have here are offered in those other centers. And so the way that it has worked historically is that if you can send students, obviously, to your own center for those programs, you do, unless the programs are full. But I would have to say with the way that local budgets have been lately, people are less likely to send students out of region, just based on the cost. Certainly.
Other questions? Yeah?
Based on your long background with the C T and knowing the people up in Concord, do you see any, do you foresee any changes in the way they operate the C T program? Funded?
I see consistent support for C T, both at the national level and then also with the current governor and the new commissioner. We are expecting a report out in mid-October in relation to recommendations that were made on renovation funding. But those are the only changes that I can see imminently.
Tom?
On the slide about S B ninety-nine, it says, "Students seeking participation in the program shall be eligible for and have access to both sending and receiving R C T E A apportionment seats on the same basis as any other sending or receiving district student."
Yes, sir.
Is that different? And if it is, what's the change?
Yes, sir. So that S B ninety-nine has some pretty significant and dramatic changes for C T in our state. It used to be that regional agreements that all three superintendents and myself had to sign on to set seat apportionment. And it used to be that the receiving district had seventy-five percent of the seats. had 75% of the seats, and that seven sending districts would have 25%. So that worked for students that we sent to Messineck, as well as students that we receive back here. Now everybody gets an equal shot, there is no 75% versus 25%. It does pose somewhat of a challenge, because all three districts do enrollment for the following year at different times. So it's challenging to make sure that everybody has an equal playing field when not all children are signing up or completing the application at the same time. The other piece to note is that any student now who participates in a CTE program is eligible to attend the high school that is connected with that CTE center for non-CTE courses.
And I think it says that tuition is, is a formula for...
There is a calculation, right, certainly, and that's something that has to be decided upon by the three superintendents.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any, as far as you know, that are in it?
Not at this point, sir, because I don't believe that superintendents have come to an agreement about that.
And that goes into effect January 1st, correct?
January 1st, yep. Well, the revised regional agreements go into effect January 1st, students can start attending, as I understand, now.
Any other, yep, Curtis?
For, is the same opportunity for students to gain access to non-CTE classes extended to students seeking CTE classes out of region?
Yes.
Okay. Do any of our students who are going out of region for CTE courses enroll in non-CTE classes at their CTE school?
Not to my knowledge at this point. Part of the reason, my understanding that Senator Waters and Representative Ladd added this to SB 99 was because of the travel time that is lost when students are going to other centers. So in order to make sure that students are getting the most out of their instructional time, there's also, as we know, because of the way that budgets have changed, some schools have had to cut back on their offerings. And so, for example, ConVale might have offerings that other schools might not, and those children might wish to take advantage of those.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Yes.
I just want to say that my daughter took the digital photo and video and loves it.
I'm so glad to hear that, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Here we've got Harris Center, who's one of our community partners and that we've been working with since 1972. So they're going to share some of the programming that's currently in place.
Hi, everyone, my name is Jenna Spear, and I'm the School Program Manager and a Teacher Naturalist at the Harris Center.
I'm Karen Rent, I'm also a Teacher Naturalist, and I'm the School Programs Assistant Manager. This feels like a long title.
It is, but it fits on your name tag. So we just want to thank you for having us tonight. Some of you may be familiar with the Harris Center, but if you're not, we have really a bunch of different aspects to our work, and one of them is conservation research, another is land protection, and we're here to talk about the education component that happens right here in your schools. So, let's see, clicker. So as you can see here, we've been, no, I didn't click, I didn't click again? Yeah, we've been working with your district since 1972. We believe that we, our mission is to connect students to the natural world right in their backyard. With that said, we do, what we're here to talk about tonight is the place-based education in the ConVale schools. So we go right to the schools, students do not need to come to us, we go to them. Every year in ConVale, we work with more than 1,400 ConVale students, we work with them in doing environmental science lessons coupled with focused outdoor explorations in nature, right outside their school. We teach in about 90 ConVale classes from pre-K through high school every year, and we visit classrooms for an average of six hours per year. We'll talk a little bit more about this in the further slides, but it's really, part of our mission is to customize these programs to each school and each classroom. We go throughout every season of the year. So the first thing we wanted to just bring to you is, what does the Harris Center bring to your students? One thing is that we work with all of the First Friends preschools throughout the year, visiting each classroom regularly to explore the nearby woods and fields. And so we go into the classrooms, and as you know, First Friends works with students of all abilities, so we make sure that we customize the program so that all students can participate. We do this work with all of our schools, even preschool, in all seasons. So lessons are often paired with games, like you can see in this picture, to make the science lessons fun and engaging. This is an example of doing a bird investigation in a school neighborhood. We go, as I said, to each of the schools in the district to work with the students. Instead of, we feel it's really important to go to them, because instead of teaching students that you have to go somewhere special to enjoy nature, we want them to realize that the natural world is all around them. So it's at their school, it's in their playground, it's at their home, and it's even on their walk home. So we want to really bring that to them wherever they are. This was taken after this class spent about an hour in the snowy woods and fields looking for evidence of wild mammals. This activity takes a lot of attention and focus. Students measure animal tracks and look for other signs, and afterwards, it's always fun to have a race before heading back in the classroom to discuss what they found. We work with students doing full units of study with them on a topic. This is a high school unit, learning about the biodiversity that exists right outside ConVale High School. This is not a one-and-done kind of collaboration. Our naturalists teach whole units that are designed around what is near each school. So these students were doing data collection outside the school, and subsequent to that, another lesson would happen probably later in that same week analyzing their data.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about what kind of expertise the Teacher Naturalists bring to students. So at the Harris Center, we have eight Teacher Naturalists. We're each assigned to work at a particular school, either in the ConVale school districts, or in the Keene, in the Keene Schools, or Jaffrey Ridge. That was me, I used to be the Temple Teacher Naturalist. So we all have very different backgrounds. So John, for example, is an excellent naturalist. He is a mushroom expert, and he works at the high school here in ConVale and at the middle schools. Jenna is a trained entomologist, so they both have really strong science backgrounds. Suzie has a mammal specialty, and I wouldn't be surprised if some of you know her, because she's been teaching at the Harris Center for decades now. Cara has a traditional education background, so she's worked in the schools. She has a really particular, great knowledge and understanding of child development. So she's the Teacher Naturalist that works at Temple and Francis Town, Peterborough and Antrim, so she's in many of your elementary schools. Our newest Teacher Naturalist, Jasamina, actually has an, is an opera singer. So she works in the First Friends schools around here, and she brings her love of music to her classes. So even though we all come from different backgrounds, we all bring our skills and we teach each other, and we all kind of pick and choose the schools that we work with based on where we live, our proximity, but also just the ages that we're comfortable with and the skills that we have.
Okay, we wanted to, oops. We wanted to talk a little bit about our organizational resources, because we feel that we bring things to your students that they might not be able to have otherwise because of some of the things, being a science organization, some of the things that we have in our building might be a little different than you might, you might have in a typical school building. So for one, we have a really large collection of pinned insects. This allows us to teach up close and personal with students of all ages. We bring these into the preschools, we bring them into the elementary schools. We feel really strongly that kids get really up close with our materials. A lot of people say to me, "Oh, my gosh, but you just spent hours pinning all those bees, and you're now going to take them to a second-grade classroom." And I'm like, "Well, yeah, because we need to learn about them, that's what they're for." Our large collection of other equipment, like binoculars, this is a particularly good time for the students. You'll hear, if you have an elementary school student or someone you know in elementary school right now, this is the hawk migration season, so we have an observatory up on Pacmanadnok. Students will learn about raptor migration at their schools, and some classrooms will take the trip up Pacmanadnok, like these students did, using our equipment to observe the birds. And then we also do a lot of bird studies at the schools, like I mentioned. So this one I wanted to include, because New Hampshire includes a lot of black flies in the springtime, and a lot of people say, "Oh, my gosh, how do you take the kids outside and enjoy themselves?" So we have all, I think we probably have 100 head nets that we loan to classrooms, we take them to the schools. This was an amphibian exploration, and so we bring the terraria and the scoopers and the field guides, so students can really learn about what lives around them, and be comfortable and focused, and have enjoyable time behind their schools in wetlands. We also, of course, have a large collection of taxidermy. So this one was a hawk lesson at a school where students are up close with our taxidermy, looking at the different adaptations that these local animals have. They often ask, "Where did these animals come from?" And so we're able to explain to them that none of the animals are, you know, they're often like accidents, roadkill, that will come to us, and if that ever happens to you and you find it amazing, right now we're looking for a chipmunk, actually. So if anyone has one. And so that way, students learn that, you know, no, we're not hunting for these animals to just mount them, but we are taking something that happened that might be sad to them, and then we can twist it around into a positive educational experience. I think almost every time I bring taxidermy to an elementary school, they ask us about In eighth grade, this is actually about to happen in probably the next, what, two weeks, all of the eighth graders do a large aquatic macroinvertebrate study. And macroinvertebrates are a biological indicator of watershed health, so the students are learning about, first, in the classroom, they learn about the macroinvertebrates and how to identify them. We bring the macroinvertebrates to their classroom first, so they can learn to identify them. Then they go out, this is Norway Pond in Hancock, and we bring the nets, the waders, the life jackets, something that wouldn't be possible for a school just to have in their supply closet. So we're able to do that with students in both SMS and GBS. And I couldn't really forget about our volunteers. So we have multiple great, wonderful people who donate their time to our school programs. We have, you know, sometimes we have a larger group, and we'd like to have smaller groups so students can really learn track identification or tree identification. So we have these lovely volunteers who will join us, and many of them are retired educators. I think you might recognize there Emily Rubel in the red jacket, who used to be a middle school teacher here, and she now volunteers her time with us. So we're really lucky to have these folks joining us in all kinds of programs and all kinds of weather.
So something that really makes the Harris Center different from other environmental education organizations is that we don't just show up and teach a lesson. We really consider our lesson units a collaboration with the teachers that we work with. So during this time of year, we're really busy meeting with teachers, coming up with plans for the year. And all of our units are geared towards, you know, whatever standards they're working on, whatever special needs or interests their students have, and they're unique schoolyards, because every school that we visit has, you know, different stuff outside. Some are in the city, or in, well, in the town, and some are more in the woods. And we create lessons that, yeah, suit whatever needs they have at the time. So this is Janet, oh, that's you, Jenna, wrong slide. So Jenna's doing a little tracking practice before we head outside, which is something that we often do. The other thing that's really nice is that we get to work with the same schools for several years and really start to develop relationships with the teachers there. So sometimes we may do a unit for several years with the teacher, and then they may become comfortable doing that on their own, and then we could switch to a different unit and start teaching that. So that's really nice. And it's one of the things that we've really learned over the last several years when we visited conferences on the national level, that not many organizations like ours get to build relationships like we do with the schools and with the teachers that we work with. They're often just like one-off lessons, and we feel like our units are a lot more meaningful because of that. And we really incorporate NGSS standards into pretty much everything that we do. That's kind of how we plan our years together, which Jenna's going to talk a little bit more about.
So Next Generation Science Standards were adopted by the schools, I can't remember how long ago now, but it was, it was a good switch. We really like these standards, and all the teachers really work with us every year to think about, okay, what standards could we address and help support their teaching throughout the year that also fits within the Harris Center mission? So this one shows students working on analyzing and interpreting data from maps to describe the patterns of Earth's features, which is one important standard that teachers often say, you know, "Could you help me with this?" We have whole collections of topographic maps for every town where every school is located in the ConVale district. So kids can often say, "Oh, I can find my house on this map," or, you know, "There's the stream behind my grandmother's house," or whatever it might be. And that brings a connection for the students. This is an activity that, it was one of my absolute favorites. This is an activity that's tied to the standard that says, "Students use observations to describe what plants and animals need to survive." And in this case, it was all about squirrels. So kindergarten, this was a kindergarten class, and it's a great time for students to learn about squirrels. They're absolutely everywhere in every community, looking outside your apartment window, as you're driving down the street, and students get so excited about learning about these creatures and what makes them so successful. This is a winter mammal discovery. We actually found a dead raccoon under the snow. One of the students told me that that was there, and we went and found it. This is a mammal evidence exploration, and students are learning the connection between animals, their body shape, and how it works for them in nature. This is called the Structure and Function Standard. Students are asked to construct an argument that animals have internal and external structures that function to support their survival. So this is, we then went back and learned all about raccoons after finding that critter. This one shows some more of our insect collection. This is some of our local butterflies, and this, this really, this lesson really focused on the standard about biological diversity, inheritance, and variation of traits, and how those things play into a population of butterflies. So I guess the main point here is that I want to just drive home that every year, when, like Karen said, when we meet with a teacher at the beginning of the year, like right now, we're basically meeting with them and saying, you know, "How do you want to structure your study with us this year, what season, and what standard?" And then we can tailor that local work to the standard.
Oh, and one other thing that we actually forgot to mention, or even put in these slide shows, is that we're actually starting to do a lot more professional development as well. So we've got workshops that teachers attend, and we have one coming up that's focused on broad-winged hawk and hawk migration and mammal evidence. So that's another great thing that teachers can do. So another part of our mission is after-school programming. So Yeti Club is one of the things that we do after-school at SMS and GBS. It is for middle schoolers who want to spend time outside and gain some wilderness skills. These after-school programs are free to students and grant-funded. So Yeti Club focuses on things like shelter building, fire making, tracking, moving quietly in the woods, so things like that. And then a few years ago, we launched Lab Girls. At the time, research was showing that girls' interest in science has dropped significantly, specifically in middle school and high school. So Suzie, our coworker, started this up. And so we bring in experts for each session, and we offer STEM activities focused on either field-based natural science. So here, they're doing macroinvertebrates, similar to what was happening in some of our classrooms. And for example, here, you know, physical science isn't really any of our strengths, but because we bring in experts during these after-school programs, we get to learn alongside the girls that attend these programs, which is kind of cool as well. We also offer programming at different rec centers or libraries in the region. So recently, Suzie did a program at the Hancock Library where kids got together and they created a newspaper. So the acorn was written and printed out and distributed in the region during one of those after-school programs. of those after-school programs.
I'll just add too that Susie's hoping to expand the after-school acorn program to a lot of the different town libraries all around the area. So that's hopefully coming to a library near you. So we wanted to include what teachers have to say because one of the things that is really, really important to us is that we are supporting teachers in their work and not just coming in and doing a program that is not supporting their learning and also their students' needs. So we have some quotes here from teachers that we wanted to share. This is one of my favorites. I'll just read it. "As always, this experience was rich and meaningful for all of my students, but I always am particularly pleased with the way it can make struggling students shine and be leaders among their peers." This is something that I've really noticed in the past five years or so, is that often I get to a classroom and a teacher says, oh, there's a couple of students that I'm not sure if they're going to be okay outside with you when we go, so let's just keep an eye. And often, those students are the ones that aren't fabulous at desk work, but they're fabulous outside. Maybe they're a hunter, maybe they are a fisher kid.
They have amazing observation skills.
Yeah, whatever it might be. And they somehow, they turn that around and all of a sudden, they're seeing themselves as successful and their peers are like, oh, gosh, this, you know, this, this call, this student friend is really, really good at plant ID or whatever it might be. So it's really fun to see that those kids get really, realize they can be very, very good at this outside science. This is another teacher that says, "It was great classroom and field work. Having aquatic macroinvertebrates in the classroom before we went out was just what the kids needed to get excited about going to the brook. It gave them knowledge, made them more confident in their ability to identify the creatures and got them immediately engaged." And this is related exactly to that Norway Pond study that I shared with you earlier. Keep doing what you're doing. I am so grateful that the HARA Center brings hands-on investigative science to our school district. Working with the HARA Center is always one of the highlights of the school year. It always inspires me to incorporate more hands-on learning after seeing how engaged the students are during HARA Center lessons. I love this one and wanted to include it because it's really important to me that teachers are seeing a different type of teaching and that that inspires them to go out and do this themselves. We've had teachers who have studied birds with us for a couple of years and then suddenly they're putting bird feeders up and they're doing that on their own and we do other things with them the next year. So it's exciting. It's contagious. I'm going to end with this one, which says, "This is only my second year with Conville and in New Hampshire. I am abundantly thankful for the collaboration with the HARA Center. I truly do not think that most families and students understand what a privilege it is to have naturalists with knowledge and resources who are able to take them on these marvelous adventures and tasks. It is very uncommon in education, unfortunately, but so incredibly vital. Thank you." I wanted to mention this video is something that you can find at the end of the slideshow in your drive to watch. It's about two minutes long and it was something we put together for our 50th anniversary, five years ago now. And then finally, a lot of people ask, well, how the heck does this get paid for? And so this is one of the things that is really very, very close to our hearts at the HARA Center. So what, the way that this is paid for in the Conville district is that you folks in your district only pay one-third of our costs. And we cover the other two-thirds from business partnerships, private donations, things like that, because it's really very closely tied in. We're, our full name is the HARA Center for Conservation Education. So you can imagine that it's very, very closely tied in to everything that we do. So we provide that funding so that every student can participate. It's affordable for the district and hopefully carries on for a long time, since 1972 now. So we've got to keep it going. Does anybody have any questions about our programs or anything about, you know, our professional development when whoever, I can't remember who said that you guys need some more professional development time? So we wanted to mention, we do have summer workshops as well as these in the school year. And we often have done professional development and coming to the schools. Actually, Dr. Forrest invited us to your workshop day, I believe it was last spring, and we came and did some workshops there as well. So do you have any questions about any of our programming or anything we do?
Any questions? Carl.
Oh, Curtis. Sorry. Thanks for the presentation and more importantly, thank you for continuing to partner with our schools and our kids. That was great. I have a question about the after-school programs, just hoping you could speak a little bit more about them. What's the duration? Are they year-long, academic year-long?
They're very, they're, each of them is a little bit different. I believe Yeti Club is, is it four weeks, six weeks? Once after school, we rotate schools so that they're at different times in different schools. This year, the Lab Girls program is actually not on school site. It's at various places near schools. And the acorn is going to be a rotating one as well. So it'll be like, you know, maybe four Wednesdays at a particular town library.
Great, great. What's the size of the programs?
You know, I, it's interesting because I have only done Yeti Club a few times. When I worked with Yeti Club, I think there were 12 students. I know that Lab Girls really fluctuates. What we find is our after-school programs fluctuate very much with the sports schedules. So we do try and offer them when it's less a busy time at sports schedules. But for the most part, we often also see that we have a draw to kids that maybe aren't sports kids, which is nice. All good? Great. Thank you all so much.
Okay, we have one more presentation. This, so I guess I want to say this is not a Conville-sponsored activity, but it is an opportunity that we would like to bring to our students that we're pretty excited about. So we want you to be aware of it and if you have any questions, to be able to address them. I'll just kind of say that upfront, but then I'm going to turn it over to Rachel and Ashley and Eric and start by introducing yourselves.
Well, that's everything I was going to say. So I'm here to introduce our two wonderful library media specialists, Ashley Mudrick and Rachel Bowman, who really have done all the legwork on this and look forward to hearing from you all after.
Hi, I'm Ashley, just in case you didn't know which one I was. So we're here tonight to talk to you all about the American Exchange Project. This came to us kind of through Principal McKillip in the spring. She was approached by a community member who's very close to our school, Adar Cohen. And he's actually a board member with this organization. So that's kind of how we first heard about it. We've been learning a lot over the last couple of months and it's something we're really excited about and we hope to bring to Conville very soon. I forgot that I have the clicker. Okay. So the American Exchange Project is a first-of-its-kind domestic exchange program within the United States. So essentially, how it works is high school seniors who are interested sign up to be part of this program and they get a two-week experience out of it. So after they graduate, they get to go to a participating location somewhere in the United States and spend a week there, kind of learning about that community, that culture, their way of life. And then they, in turn, when they get back, participate in what's called a hometown week and they help us plan activities for students coming to visit us. So it's kind of a get out, go see the world, the United States. And like I said, invite people back, our other high school grads back into our community to see what Peterborough, Conville and our surrounding towns are all about. We do have a short, it's like, it should show up. Is it on your screen, Anne? Interesting, maybe, okay. It's a short, it's like a two and a half minute video, but we feel like it really encompasses what this initiative is about, what the project is about. So we'd like to watch that with you now.
American Exchange Project.
The American Exchange Project, it's called the American Exchange Project.
It was honestly the best experience of my life.
We at the American Exchange Project have created a first-of-its-kind free domestic exchange program. We send kids in the summer after they graduate from high school on a three-week-long trip to an American town that is radically different from the one that they grew up in. Then they go back to their own hometown and they give their version of the gift they just received.
I've always grown up in rural Texas, so I'm super excited to experience that in New York.
If they come to Killmore, we really try to immerse you in the country way of life. We work cattle. We ride horses.
Boston, Massachusetts to Sheridan, Wyoming. Dodge City, Kansas, up the road to Palo Alto, California. The swamps of Lake Charles, Louisiana. Go to the glaciers of Angleridge, Alaska.
Something that pushed me out of my comfort zone, something that made me who I am and maybe like see things in a whole new way.
Okay, 10 seconds. This program gives students the opportunity to soak in a brand-new culture without ever leaving the country. You might be surprised at just how much change actually takes root.
The best things about this program are just kind of understanding that we all want together. We're trying to find ways to connect to each other and the best way is just to talk.
It's also a chance to just get practice of going outside of your bubble that you grew up in and experience a different reality.
Our dreams that senior exchanges become as common to the high school experience as the prom. All it takes is a little bravery and the belief that most Americans are good people. And when it goes well, we're reminded that we're all in this together.
So as of right now, this program is growing and it is in 70 different high schools in nearly 40 states across the country.
I'm Rachel Bowman. And as a partner school, Conville would be able to offer this free exchange program to any graduating senior who's on track to, or any senior who's on track to graduate. So we're just very excited to offer this as a, because it's this free program, there's no barriers other than time for kids to be able to participate. Ashley and I, the way this kind of came to us was, would you guys be interested in being exchange managers and facilitating this? We've worked together, working with the summer program here at Conville. So we had some practice with this, but this is new to us and we're just very excited. The program is incredibly supportive and kind of gives you a lot of the materials you need to get started. So we would be the main point of contact. We would help find students who want to participate, inform families about it, find host families for the students to stay with. One thing that we didn't mention was each of our students who participate gets their own experience. So they, all of our students don't go to one place. So if, they may go to different parts of the country, they each get to pick their own week that they want to participate. So it works around their work schedules or family schedules in the summer. And each of every, the commonality in this program or this project is that all students who participate will experience these four things. A cultural immersion in the community that they stay in, involved in community events, professional opportunities. This means maybe introducing them something to professional that's maybe unique to that region. I can imagine if you were going to the coast of Maine, maybe you would learn about, you know, lobster fishermen experiences, but something kind of unique to our, our community. And then also, everyone will be involved in some kind of volunteer or service activity that's connected to the local community.
These are, sorry. These are just some photos that American Exchange Project shared with us of some of the weeks that their students participated in. And so how this works is, this is a very, very generalized timeline. But basically, in the fall, Rachel and I would work with American Exchange Project to kind of recruit kids, recruit families. Like Rachel said, another part of this that we really liked is if one of our students wants to participate in this program, they do not have to be a host for a student coming to visit. Because I think that's, that sometimes can be a barrier as well. You know, everybody has different home lives, different living situations. So if one of our kids wants to participate, they can without feeling like someone has to stay in their home. In early spring, our kids will find out where they're going. So AEP asks that we kind of have a celebration. We've seen some videos online, like some schools go really big and do like a big reveal on stage, that type of thing. So that would be something that we can kind of plan. But the idea is, is for it to be really exciting and get the kids pumped about where they're going. And then during the summer is when we would have hometown week, again, where kids come to us from other areas or parts of the country. And our kids help kind of facilitate that and then our kids go out and travel. Throughout these months, we would be meeting with our kids regularly, kind of planning hometown week, checking in with them, seeing where they're going, helping them get ready for their trip, et cetera. So those are kind of like the three major events that happen, but the planning will happen from now until when our hometown week happens.
We just wanted to, when we, we talked with Principal McKillip, she did, you know, want to make sure that we, that this does align to our mission at Conville, at the high school in particular. And we emphasized the opportunity to learn and grow. It feels like the alignment is very much part of the project's mission. So opportunity to learn and grow, the compassion for others, communicating and collaborating. Kids all year will be, we're doing like Zoom meetings, getting to know each other, figuring out what kind of things they would want to do when they go to wherever they're going. And then also just this sense of civic-minded citizens, just having a greater sense of the country than where they're from. And if there's any questions, we're relatively new to this. There's lots more to learn, but we, we feel pretty excited about this, just as an opportunity for our high school seniors. And they'll be, they'll be fresh out of graduation when they get to participate next summer. But if there's anyone who has questions, be happy to answer.
I got questions about the host families or the students who host. Do they have to, you said, students don't have to host. You don't have to host a family, but suppose we, like, we're empty nesters. We could host a kid, we don't have a kid to, to host the kid.
Yep.
That work?
Absolutely. It can be, we would probably first try to tap into our high school community, just kind of give those people the first offering. We could also imagine it potentially being families that maybe have juniors who want to kind of see what the program's all about before their student gets in, actually would be going on a trip. So that, that's something. But yes, if we, if we needed additional families or our numbers were big enough, we would tap into community members as well.
So just to clarify, this is happening this year? Okay, can you put me down as the first person on the list?
I was going to ask you that.
See, we told you there'd be advantages to this.
Who pays the travel expenses?
American Exchange Project, they pay for everything. So the student's trip is completely free. I think the only thing they technically don't cover is souvenirs or any spending money that a student might want to bring with them. We also, like, as exchange managers, we get money to plan our activities for a hometown week. So the idea is, is when the kids come to us, they don't have to spend a penny. It's all taken care of.
So I see on their website that they, they have 40 places listed as our towns and there is one in New Hampshire. Is, is that where we're going? We're hoping to be one of their official our towns?
Yes. So I'm not sure if that site is fully up to date. I know as of right now, I'm aware of, I think Sohegan is going to participate this year. I don't know if the one that's on their website is still an active participant, but they have done it. And we spoke with a exchange manager from Montpelier, Vermont, because we wanted, before we got involved, we wanted to make sure, like, what's it like doing it in a relatively rural area? You know, we're not in New York City. We're not, just what, what would that feel like? And, and she had nothing but great things to say about the whole organization. So made us feel better.
So made us feel better.
Other questions?
Who provides American Heritage funding?
I think they are a pretty well-funded organization. I think they get a lot of donations. The person that you saw on the stage in the video is, I'm going to get the names wrong now. But it's, he's the son of David McCullough, a famous historian, writes lots of books about presidents. And so I think there's, it's a pretty well-connected group. And I think he, it was a passion project for him, this idea that, you know, there's all these exchange programs, but not necessarily within the U.S. And specifically ones that don't cost students money out of pocket to get involved in, so.
Thank you. Other, other questions? Like a very program, and it sounds like you a lot of good experiences, so.
Hopefully Liam will be able to give you updates as we move forward in this process.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So you do have access to all these presentations. Were put in the drive, so I know that people have referenced videos. So you have access to those to watch.
Janine?
So tonight, we have policy EBB, Safe Schools. It was a first-read policy two weeks ago. And tonight, we have the opportunity to adopt. If you remember, this, it, this policy encompasses or tells the district, describes the three crisis management, sports injury action plan, and the school bus safety program. What has, every district must have, and this is ours. So if we could have a motion to adopt.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. School Board Goals. Since our meeting last week, we've, I've seen several different emails back and forth between different people. I know Jim has been working on some things. I think my concern is that, looking at the goals in the past that have been adopted, they've been very, very succinct goals about what the school board's duty is and how we're going to carry that out through the year. I know, yes, we need to get out to the community about what our goals are. But I think what we're talking about is something that's an internal topic that we need to just look at as far as what our board goals are for the year. I think each of the committees has already pretty much shared with us what their goals are. At any point in time, a committee can come to the board and say, you know, we, we'd like to work on this. Or the board can ask a specific committee if they would work on something. But I think committee goals are different than the overall board goals. So in the meantime, what I did do is I took the board policy that says what the school board needs to do. And essentially summarized it with some of the things that I had given you before. And tried to succinctly put down the things that both the building administrators and the SAU administrators shared with us. I do think that this overall attempt at board goals is something that we really need to look at and, and get decided on. And worry more about what it is that we're doing and not specific wording of, of whatever it is. But, so I also would like to hear from more people as we, we didn't get a lot of input at the goals meeting last week from a variety of people. So so that's my recommendation. And again, I would like to hear from other people. Sarah?
These look, these are much, I like, these feel much better than what we saw in our work session. I like them.
Dan?
You know, I was thinking about some of the things Janine brought up at our last, at our goal meeting about marketing and if there were those that thought it was a good idea and some that didn't want to put that kind of a spin on any of our goals. But I feel like, as I think about it, the landscape has really changed for public schools. It's almost like colleges now, where you have to get your benefits out there. Talk about the Harris Center, CTE. And it's not putting a spin on things. It's telling them what we're offering to increase, and to quite frankly, increase enrollment. There's opportunities out there that I think we're missing. And I don't know how we could do that as, as a, as a goal, or if it's a communication function. But in the old days of advertising, they used to say, sell the sizzle and not the steak. That's not what we want to do here. We just want to tell people what, what we're doing. CTE or foreign language programs, which I don't think they all know about.
And I think that's what the communications committee is looking at, so. Yes, Janine?
So I, and I think that that, the work with the superintendent pro-district successes and achievements with our stakeholder, I think that, that, that goal, Dan, would fall under that particular goal. That attempt or that, that work would fall under that goal. I, I really like these goals, too. I think it encompasses, like, all of the committee work and what's going on in the committees. And the committees have the more specific steps as to how we're going to accomplish these goals.
Okay. Anyone else? Jim?
Unlike Sarah, I don't necessarily like these better, but I can live with them. I accept them as written.
Okay. I guess that's an approval. All right. Then can I have a motion to accept these as the board goals?
I move.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much. All right. Deb Riley is not able to be with us tonight, so.
Yes, Deb Riley, who is planning to come to board meetings, is still, her dog cannot be left alone for two weeks. So she's been trying to patch together. So for her to come to a night meeting right now is difficult. But I have put into the board drive a copy, it's a spreadsheet, of the dis, the SAU and district goals. So you got paper copies of the complete goals around facilities and literacy. And now the, the special ed, you had gotten, you'd seen the goal before, but now we broke down all the steps. So everything is in your drive. I put it in tonight's folder, but I'm now thinking maybe I should just have a goals folder so that you can reference it and not wonder, you know, which meeting it was presented in. But if you, I'm happy to go through it, but I don't, I don't know if I need to. But it's available for you to look through. And if people have questions, you can send those to me.
It, it does look like it's in its own folder. 2526 school goals. That is outside of the tonight's packet folder, so. It's, it's in the main drive. That's the third folder down and under date-modified search. So 2526 school goals. Yeah.
All right. So people can look that over. And if there are questions, you can send them in. We're also, I know we've talked a lot about special education. And obviously, we'll have at some point Deb come in and give us a lot more detail about our special ed system as it exists here in ConVale, so. And it will also be part of the education committee study that they're doing, so.
So I put the spreadsheet in the folder for tonight's meeting. So I'm not sure what, Curtis, if you're but
You're, you're right, it's not in that folder. Can I add it real quick? Or no?
Yeah.
Is that easy?
You can move it, yeah.
All right.
While he's doing that. Should we go on to budget guidance? You wish to speak to budget guidance? Okay. All right. Again, if there are, the document is in your folders. And if there's any questions, you can forward them to us and we'll try to get them answered. But essentially, that will be what the administration will be looking at as they prepare the budget and as we go into our budget meeting. So. Okay. Any public comment?
No.
Hi. Negotiations.
Okay. All right. No, not in public tonight, so I would accept a motion to adjourn. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I don't know what folder you're talking about.
I, I opened the school, I saw the school goals and I got happy. I was like, oh, it's all, everything's right there, organized. And I realized that you were talking about sorry, steroids. Yeah, I don't get it. I'm asleep, a bit jumpy.
Are you talking about the folder?